Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Okay. Once again, we'd like to welcome our listening and viewing audience to the monthly Commissioner meeting of the Housing Authority of Michigan City, Indiana. With that, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please? Can you hear me, Ms. Hutton? Attorney P. Charlo, can you hear me?
Yes, everyone hearing.
Okay, are we all right now?
Yes.
All right. Okay, let's, let's start this over again. We'll go ahead and get started. Once again, we'd like to welcome our listening and viewing audience to the monthly meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Milton Malone?
Present.
Carla Mott?
Present.
Dorita Sanders-Malone?
Present.
Willie Lee? Kenneth Fly?
Present.
Rodney McCormick?
Present.
Nathan Patrick?
Present.
Attorney Nelson Bacarum?
Here.
Okay. With six members present, we have a quorum. We can start this meeting. The Chair will now ask that we stand and have our pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all. Thank you so much. At this time, we would like to have a moment of silent meditation. We do want to remember former Commissioner Lester M. Norvell, Sr., and we would like for everyone to keep his family in your prayers and thoughts. And so, we will ask now that we have a moment of silent meditation. Thank you so much. Okay, according to our agenda, the Chair will now ask for the approval of the minutes from January 27, 2022, with all necessary corrections.
I move that our minutes from the January 27 meeting, 2022, be approved as written.
I would like to restate that again, with all necessary corrections. Can we do that over?
What are, what are those corrections?
There may be some corrections on the very last page towards the end of closing statements made, so I think they're fine with the exception of one or two lines. So, I'm asking for the approval of the minutes with the necessary corrections, please.
There's other corrections. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Nathan. Mr. Patrick?
There's some more corrections that need to be made on these based upon the minutes that I received and I watched the video and went through the minutes and then the video, but there's some major corrections that need to be made if I can point those out.
Please do.
Yes, sir. Under other business, other business on the meetings here from the minutes, there's the first section, that first paragraph there, there's dialogue between Mr. Vincent and it looks like Commissioner McCormick. There were some things taken out of context there. It's saying there that it was Mr. Vincent calling point of order, but that switched, that was Commissioner McCormick. And then, there's some other things in here as far as like the, the mayor, his name is spelt, yes, the name, his name is spelled P-E-R-R-Y, his last name is spelled P-A-R-R-Y.
I guess.
And Angie Nelson Deitch's last name was misspelled. And there's one more, oh, Shong, S-H-O-N-G, it's Shong, not Shong.
Okay.
Those are some things that I pointed out.
All right, any other corrections to be noted?
Yes, under other, other business, dialogue between me and Mr. Vincent, they said to Mike, I'm reading it, pardon, the Mike at the last minute, well, I said, I said last meeting, and then Mr. Patrick, Commissioner Patrick, addressed all the ones that I've also found also. Thank you.
Thank you so much, we'll make those corrections. We can either approve these at a later date or at our next meeting, or we can approve them now with the necessary corrections. Can I get a motion for that?
I'd like to approve to a later date with these missing corrections.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Commissioner Patrick that the minutes be approved at our next meeting.
Second.
And second is by who?
Ms. McCormick.
Rodney McCormick. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. These minutes will be approved at the next regular board meeting. And Ms. Hutton, I will get with you on those corrections that I see that needs to be taken care of. Now, these minutes are, meetings are being recorded, right?
Yes.
Okay, they're being recorded as far as the video and audio, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We need to make sure, we need to ensure that these minutes reflect what was actually said in the meeting, okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay, moving on to the old business, having none under new business, board approval and informational updates. Reports finance.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I would just like to say that there have been a slight increase in the revenues received from the tenants. Based on Mr. McCormick's request, I did add a section, the numbers were already in there, but I added a section to my report just to show the percentages of increase or decrease every month. We don't have any major updates right now, does anyone have any questions regarding my report?
Would you want us, did you want to give us the percentage?
Well, for the public housing unit, the percentage went up to 87% received. Last month, it was only 80%, and we went up to 87. For MCHDI, we slightly dropped a little bit, we were 89.4% and we went to 88.7%. Business activity, we went up from 75% to 92% of total revenues received.
Is there any questions on our finance report?
Yes.
Go ahead, who's that?
Commissioner McCormick, first of all, first of all, during the Zoom meetings, we must do a roll call on every vote, just this house cleaning, housekeeping, we need to do that. I have a question.
That's, Mr. McCormick, if I may interrupt, that is correct, that is a new public access council law, for open door law, that is, is in effect, whenever we have these Zoom meetings, whenever there's a vote taken, there needs to be a roll call so that's clear as to how each elected or appointed official has voted.
Okay. Let's go back, are you guys with your report, Ms. Dungy?
Uh, yes.
All right, questions or comments on the report?
Have a question.
Go ahead.
I have several questions, but I'm gonna yield the rest of my time to Mr. Patrick, but I see on the report to vendor payout, I see cable TV, $1,832. Can you explain to, explain to me what is that all about?
That's a section in the, the Comcast bill for like the phone, the internet, all that is combined, the, the names that you see for the listing, those are the, they're the contract names in the system.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not understanding, I'm not following, because we also have phone and cell phone for $1,377, and I've never seen a cable bill in my life that was $1,832.
You have to remember that we're on a zero threshold and all of our bills are not paid every single month. Some months, the vendor payouts will be bigger than others, as well as these are for all the developments, not just for one development.
Do we have cable TV in every development?
It's not cable TV, it's not actual TV, it's part of the...
I'm not understanding, I'm here background.
Do we understand what a zero threshold is?
No.
I'm sorry, I've been corrected, we do have basic.
Do we understand what a zero threshold is?
May I, do I still have the floor, sir?
Yeah.
May I please have a copy of the, may I please be presented with a copy of the, the bill so I can look at it myself?
No.
Along with the phone bill and cell bill?
That is something I would have to speak to the Director about, I don't have an answer for that question, I apologize.
With, with that being said, may I, Mr. Bacarum, or the unit attorney, is he there?
Yes, I'm here, Mr. McCormick.
Am I, am I entitled to receiving a copy of the, of the cable bill and the telephone and cell bill?
As a Commissioner, you are entitled to review the bills and say that they're presented so that you can make an informed decision.
Yes. Yes, I, um, at this time, Mr. Chair, I would like to have a copy of those as soon as possible.
You can come in and see the Director, Mr. McCormick, and review the bill. The bill will stay in the office. Did you have something, Mr. Patrick?
I'm not, excuse me, sir, what day can I, I would like to come in tomorrow to, to look at that.
Okay, check with the Executive Director, she will let you know when she's available, and you can come in and review the bill, okay?
Making this official request, I am requesting a copy to be given to me, thank you.
All right, I don't know about that, we can review the bill, but I don't know if we take out copies because that is in-house information, like I said, you can review it. Okay, Mr. Patrick, did you have anything?
Yes, I had a couple of things here, I just noticed some different questions that Commissioner McCormick pointed out as far as the, the cable bill, the telephone bill, and then, is it Filana?
Yes, it's Filan.
Okay, so, and I saw, and I heard that Filana pointed out that these bills are kind of compiled, do we know how many months are these bills compiled? So that where it builds up these, do we have a gauge on the timeframes that they compile to where then we pay them, or?
They are paid whenever HUD gives us authorization to pay them, we have to wait for the HUD Field Office to give us permission, sometimes it's right away, sometimes it's several months.
Okay, so there's no specific timeframe on that?
No, sir.
Okay, and then, yes, sir?
Mr. Patrick, that's what we mean by zero threshold, and when we get a chance, you and I, we need to sit down along with the Executive Director and bring you up to speed on what zero threshold deals with, okay?
Moving on, I just, those, that's the questions that I had, and then, as well as, I would like to kind of stop by as well with the Director to just see the, see the, the vendor, the contracts here as well, and I think Commissioner, Rodney, Commissioner McCormick mentioned the same thing, so I would, I'll be in attendance as well to kind of see those things if they can't leave in-house or whatever, I'm just interested in looking at them.
Did you get a, did you get a packet, Mr. Back?
I received nothing, and I requested it.
You didn't get a packet?
I did not.
You didn't get a board packet?
I did not get a board packet.
Did, you got nothing?
I got the meeting minutes, which I'm, which I have in front of me, as well as the link to the Zoom, that's all I received.
Those meeting minutes and the board package should have been right behind it if you got it off of the internet.
Nope.
May I make a point of order?
Uh, yeah, hold on, Mr. Mal...
Uh, Mr. Patrick, I do see your name in the email where the board packet was sent, I'm not sure if you missed it by mistake.
Board packet, so with the board packet, what am I, what am I?
With the board packet, Mr. Patrick, you should also have a copy of the minutes, and the board package should include all of our contracts that we pay, all of that is in the board packet.
Oh, are you mean, you mean these right here?
Yes, that's part of it, and then you go down a little further, you will see where it says contract report.
Yeah, yeah, so...
That's what you're looking for, that's what you're looking for.
I meant to clarify, sorry, that's my, my, my fault, I meant to clarify, what I mean is the individual, so I understand that they're listed here, but what I'm interested in are the individual contracts outside of being listed individually by name, but the actual individual contracts per, like, for example, pest management, I would like to see the pest management, pest management control contract, and then so forth.
Okay, you can do that at the, at the convenience of the Executive Director, because she has a lot of things on her plate, and she will give you a time when you can come in and she can pull that information out for you. And like I said, you're gonna have to give her some time, because we have a lot of things on our plate, we have another React coming, and some other things that is gonna take her away from her desk, I'm sure, okay? You have any other questions, Mr. Patrick?
No, not at this time.
All right, the Chair will seek a motion for the approval of the finance report. Madam Secretary, would you call a roll?
There's no motion on the table.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. The Chair would seek a motion for the approval of the finance report.
I move not to accept the financial report until the Commissioners are brought up to speed on the information that they're requesting.
I'll second that.
When property moved on second, not to accept the finance report, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Milton Malone?
No.
Carla Mott?
No.
Dorita Sanders-Malone?
No.
Willie Lee? Kenneth Fly?
Aye.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
Nathan Patrick?
Aye.
Motion doesn't carry because there's a tie, and so, we'll table.
And Mr. Malone, if I may, make a statement right, real quick, when it comes to the finance reports, just for some clarification, moving forward, just a point, when it comes to the finance reports, when a motion is, is, is said for the approval of financial reports, whoever is making the motion should move it forward, make the motion, approve the finance report subject to audit, because once you approve those, those financial reports during the monthly meeting, then they, you know, become part of the official record, but you always want to have it subject to audit, because there's anything that changes within those financial reports through the year during an audit, then, you know, they have to go back and reflect those things in the minutes as well. So, moving forward, just, just have a point, financial reports approved subject to audit.
Okay.
Point of order, point of order, I think that should come from our, that's legal advice, and I think that should come from our attorney or from our Chair, and to have interruptions from the outside, someone who's not a Commissioner, is inappropriate, thank you.
I know, sir.
I am actually the financial TA for the, for the Housing Authority, so that, that does not come from someone from the outside.
He is correct.
And as someone who is here to, to help the Housing Authority with finance and everything else, any suggestions I made is for the whole of the Housing Authority as well as the board.
Okay.
And Mr. Malone, if I may, if I may state, step in, I totally, totally agree with Mr. Vincent, he's been put in place by HUD authorities to help us get out of troubled status, so his advice is well given, and we should follow it, because he knows exactly how it is that we need to move forward in order to get out of troubled status, per HUD.
You're exactly right, Attorney, and this, this, this packet has to go to HUD, so we need to be right when we send it to them.
Mr. Malone, by the, by the way, I wanted to touch a little bit more about this zero threshold. By the way, Mr. Patrick, nice to have you with us, I'm glad that you've, you've been appointed, look forward to working with you, sir. Some of these, some of these questions and concerns regarding troubled status and zero threshold, these are some of the things that we would like to sit down with and explain to Mr. Patrick, and, and so, I think it's clear, you know, from the discussions that we, that we just had, you know, all of these financial records and payments, anything that, any money that goes out of our Housing Authority because of the fact that it's in troubled status, regardless of whether or not the Commissioners approve it, it has to be approved by HUD. Yes. So, that's, I just wanted to make that clear so that everyone knows, I, I understand Mr. McCormick's position, Mr. Patrick, and I totally agree, they have every right to look at what it is that they're paying out to make sure that they're making a sound decision, but just to be clear, this has to go a step above, because we're at a zero threshold, and HUD has to approve it either way.
Did you get that, Mr. Patrick?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
So, why don't we try this again, and I'm, I recommend that we approve these, or this finance report, and if there's anything that we need to correct, we should do that. Now, can we get a motion to that effect?
Motion is already on the table.
We, uh, we had a tied vote, which means that the motion is a tied vote, so it would come...
The motion fails.
Okay.
The motion fails because there's a tie vote, there's no one here to break the tie, there's no, so the motion fails, and that's why I'm asking for us to move forward. I think we should approve these, or this report, and move on to our next report. And they have a right, they do have a right, Mr. Patrick, Mr. Dungy, you have a right to come in and take a look at it, but we will not be putting copies out whereby they may get to the public, okay? You do have a right, come in, take a look at it.
I totally disagree with you, sir, I think that we are entitled to these records, it's public records, and that information should be released to the public if anybody requests it.
They have a right to come in and take a look at it, and since that motion, since that motion died for a lack, since the motion is dead, we can move on to our next report.
Excuse me, before you move, before you move on, uh, 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 Ms. Malone, you may want to go back and have the roll call of the previous vote, that a roll call was not taken.
I didn't hear you, Mr. Vincent.
Uh, there was a motion that was on the floor, and there was not a, a roll call that was taken. Was that the minutes?
Yes.
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 I, I motion again not to accept the minutes and, and until corrections are made.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved on second, not to approve the minutes until all corrections have been made. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Could I call for point of order, please? Because when we did the, the motion for the minutes, didn't we already say that we would table those minutes, they would be approved at the next meeting after the corrections?
I think we did.
That's what we said.
We had to have a roll call.
Yeah, that was what was said, but you still need the roll call to make sure that you know how each one voted.
We need a roll call, can we go back and call a roll on that, Attorney Charlo?
Yes, go ahead, that's what you should do.
All right.
Milton Malone?
Aye.
Carla Mott?
Aye.
Dorita Sanders-Malone?
Aye.
Willie Lee? Kenneth Fly?
Shit, man, how this shit going on, what we, what we doing here, y'all want to approve the minutes, I say hold the minutes off till you get some correction.
That's what we're asking for.
Until we get correction.
Yeah, all right.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
Nathan Patrick?
He might not have heard you.
He answered.
Oh, okay. All right, with a 6-2-0, this motion was carried, and the minutes will be corrected and approved at the next meeting, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on, our next report is the Director's report.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Okay.
Blessings, good afternoon.
I'd like to let everyone know that we have in the paper, went out to bid for vacancy reduction, we have six units that were going out to bid, we had an open pre-bid meeting that was held on Tuesday, February 22 at 10:00 a.m. The bid packets will be available, and there will be no cost for requesting the packet. Submission deadline, the proposal in accordance with the conditions defined in the IFB must be received by certified mail overnight delivery service, UPS, FedEx, et cetera, or hand-delivered to the Michigan City Housing Authority Central Office, no later than 3:00 p.m. on March 9. Email or fax submissions will not be submitted, accepted. Please submit two copies of your bid, and women in minority home forms, terms are strongly included to submit a bid. Submit a bid marked vacancy reduction 2022, and it should go to Ms. Fly. If a contractor has submitted a proposal in error, the original proposal may be picked up and re-submitted before the submission deadline. There will be a public bid open on Thursday, March 10 at 2:00 p.m. at this address. We have a bunch of units, and we have received monies to fix these units, so HUD told us to go out for bid to try to get a contractor, because at this time, I only have two maintenance for over 185 units, and so, we are soliciting a contractor to pump and do the units. The next thing on the...
Ms. Hutton?
Yes.
Did we receive money from HUD for this?
Yes, we did.
They finally sent some money, how much did they send? Do we know?
Uh, we, we see... Uh, we, we see, uh, roughly around six hundred and something thousand dollars.
Okay. And how many units are you looking at?
At this time, we're looking at six.
Okay. Is there an estimated cost?
The estimated cost for the units?
Yeah.
Can I, can I speak to that, uh, Ms. Hutton?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Benson.
Uh, good afternoon. Yeah, so, so the procurement package, um, uh, was done. Um, I was present for the, uh, the pre-bid meeting. We only had one contractor that showed up. Uh, the scope of work that was put out there, like I said, being more like the bid pack, they are there at the office. Uh, the scope of work, uh, is two, two ways. We had the general scope of work, so the general scope of work is work that's done in each unit. Uh, no matter what, it's patching paint, stripping waxing floors, uh, replacing hardware, things of that nature, make sure cabinets are working. And then you have unit specific, um, uh, items that have to be done, uh, unit specific scope of work. So one unit, you may have to replace all cabinets and countertops. Another one, you may have to replace all interior doors and windows, things of that nature. So, uh, we did get a scope of work, uh, we did, uh, have a walkthrough, uh, today, the, uh, the maintenance supervisor, Clem, did do a walkthrough on today, uh, for unit specific, um, scope of work. As far as cost analysis, I am putting that together, uh, per unit. Uh, but I will have that available. Uh, I can email that out to, to the board members so they will know, uh, exactly what we're looking at, uh, cost-wise, uh, for these units.
Okay.
I can have that to you by next week.
All right, very good. Thank you. Ms. Hutton, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, and, uh, next thing I need to let the board know is that Goldie, who was our auditor, is retiring due to health reasons. And so we are, uh, getting ready to get a new auditor for the twenty twenty-one.
Has a bid, has a bid gone out?
Uh, according to her, because of the timeframe, I did not have to, uh, re-bid this. I can just, uh, pick up auditor to do this.
All right, did we get any recommendations from anywhere?
Yes, we did. The State Board of Accounts sent me a list of auditors that are familiar with public housing. And so we have about ten auditors on that list.
All right, any questions or comments regarding this from anybody on the board? Okay, Ms. Hutton, uh, when is this, when does the audit due?
The audit is due June thirty.
Okay. Expeditiously, we need to make sure that we have this audit in on time. Uh, this, uh, as you know, and, um, Mr. Patrick, uh, for your information, we need to have this audit done because this affects our performance score. Okay? And our performance score is very important. Uh, that says whether or not we, uh, are in trouble, whether we will remain in trouble, whether we will get out of trouble. So we need to make sure we get, uh, someone in here that is familiar with housing. Uh, and, uh, let's see if we can have this audit completed, uh, before, before time. Okay?
What's our current status right now from the previous audit?
From the previous, um?
What do you mean status? You mean, are we in trouble?
Yes, by the, by the qualification that you just mentioned, what is our previous, what is our current status?
Our current status says that we're a troubled agency. Okay? Now, Ms. Hutton might give you some information, uh, as far as our last react score. Uh, which was, uh, in my opinion, uh, progress, progression made. Uh, I think, Ms. Hutton, were we at forty-two?
Yes, and, um, we got, we passed, we got sixty-one.
And we went from a forty-two to a sixty-one in one year's time.
Okay, and with, and real quick, with not, without wanting to, uh, too much detail, um, are, are, are these scores generated based upon a compilation of our, uh, finance reports, our, basically all of our reports?
The FAS score is, but the react score is not.
It's not, right. The react score is separate, but the react score is certainly important.
The FAS.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hutton, I'm sorry, go ahead with your report.
Uh, that's it at this time.
Uh, I have a question. Um, we seen an increase in the revenue uh, uh, from our finance manager. Are we still, uh, trying to make sure that all of the residents uh, has the information that's needed to get assistance in paying this rent, their back rent? Because we have some back rent owed to this agency.
Yes, uh, at this time, uh, we have, uh, roughly around sixteen residents that we're still waiting for their emergency assistance to let us know if they're gonna pay.
Okay, do we know how much money is owed at this point in, uh, rent, rent in the arrears?
Ooh.
And I might, uh.
I, I have to get back with you regarding that. Um, it has gone down because we have, um, we've lifted some of the residents uh, that owe a large balances. And, uh, we now are gonna have to write that off.
Okay, uh, they owe large balances, uh, for Mr. Patrick's sake, uh, some of these balances go back how far? Twenty, what?
Four years.
Four years?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Patrick, you need, you needed to know that. Uh, that was well before our time. And, uh, so, uh, we had to do some write-offs to bring our books back in line. This will help us in the audit as well. Is that right, Ms. Hutton?
That is correct.
All right.
I have a quick question. Um, so are, is there anyone on our board currently that were present four years ago that could speak for that or?
No. I don't think so.
That could speak to what?
To speak to those score that, uh.
For the four years.
Yes. Is there anyone on the board that was present then that could speak to that?
Ms. Mock.
I was on the board. Um, this is Ms. Mock and I was on the board then. But as far as the collection of the rents, no, I wouldn't have any knowledge of why those rents were not collected.
Thank you, Ms. Mock.
Um, one of the things you may want to look at is, uh, that is a, uh, part of the day-to-day operations. And as board members, we're not to involve ourselves in day-to-day operations. Okay?
Like you do, like.
Yeah, I, I saw, I read that in the, uh, that I C code, yeah.
All right. Did somebody have some, did somebody make the comment?
I think attorney for Char, for Char.
I was just gonna address that, Mr. Patrick. I was the attorney, uh, four years ago as well. And, um, I'll let you know that, you know, we can only take action, you know, regarding, uh, an eviction or, or damages hearings once the Housing Authority, you know, director, uh, makes that aware to us. So it really goes to the administration whether or not how, how they want to handle, you know, what money is owed and who they want to evict, quite frankly. We can only take, we can only move, you know, and file some type of complaint once we have that, you know, information. So specifically regarding like those large amounts, you know, we wouldn't be able to do anything unless the director or the board directed us to do so. And it's unfortunate that it got that large right now, you know, it took action. And by the way, I also mentioned, because I think someone said something about write-offs. Um, that hasn't been written off yet. You know, that's, that's, that's something that the board has to take action on at a later date. What I can tell you is that we've had the eviction and we have the order of the eviction and the damages ordered by the judge are those large amounts.
So, um, before, so, okay, because I, I think, uh, it was the director, uh, Hutton, she mentioned those, right? So there, those, they haven't been written off yet and then, so at the request of the director, we can still receive, um.
Payments on those?
We received the correct.
So, so the way, that goes into a little bit more of legal, uh, background. So if we wanted to, um, there's something called a proceeding supplemental hearing where we would use the court's power to determine whether or not we can go after that amount. The problem is, is oftentimes we can't serve these individuals because we don't know where they are. And we, and we can't use that, that, uh, you know, that, that process. But to answer your question, yeah, if, if, you know, if a tenant or an ex-tenant that's been evicted comes in and pays on that, on that judgment, then absolutely, yeah, that, we can accept that payment. I, I've never seen it happen though, just to, you know, to be honest.
One last question. Yes, sir.
I was just gonna say, yeah, that, the, the process is called a proceeding supplemental hearing and that's post damages.
Damages, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. Um, who was, uh, under those four years ago, uh, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm so Ms., uh, Ms. Mock, if she was on there four years ago, who was our, um, who was the director at that time?
Yeah, that would have been Ms. Norma Thomas.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you have anything else, Ms. Hutton?
No, I don't.
I have a question.
Got a question? Someone has a question?
Yes, Commissioner McCormick. When we, you keep saying, um, um, Ms. Hutton, you, you speak about the large amount of money that's owed. Um, my question for anyone that really tried to give me something logical, how, if we were, if the last administration was doing so bad and according to Mr. Malone, the last director, the last chair, everybody was bad.
I didn't say that. Don't put my, don't put words in my, don't try to put any words in my mind.
I'm not the only, sir, please don't interrupt me when I'm on the, on the floor, please.
Well, I'm telling you, don't do that. We're not gonna play that. We're not gonna do that. Don't, we're not gonna do that.
You're not, I'm not the only commissioner you told that to. I'm not gonna speak for the other commissioners.
And we're not gonna have an Anthony and Andy show, so you might as well stop it.
I'm trying to talk without you interrupting me. By the way, I do have it on audio and I will send it out in email. But by the way, I just want to know, how are we able to come up with an exact sum of what people owe if we were not giving out receipts? And so much stuff has came up missing. How are we able to determine what people actually owe? Thank you, Ms. Hutton. That's all I need to know.
All right.
Wow.
Moving on to our next, uh, uh, area attorney's report?
Yeah, I have, I have a few things to report on, Mr., Mr. President. Uh, this, this last month, uh, before, after our last board meeting, we've had, um, four, let me see, I'm sorry, one, two, or five evictions. Um, two of them have been continued, so we proceeded on three of them. We had two damages hearings. All suc, all successful. Uh, we haven't had any issues with, um, losing an eviction hearing or not getting the damages award that, that we had asked for. That's what I, that's one, uh, one thing that I wanted to, uh, to address with you all. Um, secondly, I, I, I mean, I, I need to, uh, uh, inform the board also that, uh, there's been a complaint filed against Ms. Hutton in her official capacity by Mr. McCormick. And as her, uh, uh, being, being, uh, filed in her official capacity, obviously we, as legal attorneys, have entered, uh, entered our appearance on her behalf on that. Um, that's all I'm gonna say. Obviously, it's pending litigation, so I'm not gonna touch anymore, more on that situation. Uh, but I obviously wanted to inform the board that there is a pending legal action against Ms. Hutton in her official capacity. Uh, lastly, just wanted to, again, welcome Mr. Patrick. Look forward to work, working with you, sir. Um, we will, we will, at some point, uh, meet each other face-to-face, do this virtual stuff for now. Hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll be face-to-face. But, um, I believe that, uh, we will be sitting down with you and, and discussing anything that you, you know, uh, need, need help with or, or want to be brought up to speed on. I think Mr. Malone will, will get ahold of you on that, but just wanted to welcome you and, and, you know, uh, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you very much. Um, I had one question for you, if I might, Mr. Chair, for, uh, Mr. Pichardo.
You had it for the attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Pichardo, you, yeah, you mentioned, um, in passing the, and I know you said you can't go into depths, um, on the, you said there was a lawsuit or, sorry, a complaint, uh, between our director. Um, who is the, um, the, who's the representative? So who's the representing attorney for the, you're the representing attorney for the unit, right?
For the Housing Authority, right.
For, for us, so like, who represents the, um, the commissioners in their official, official capacity? Like, how is that?
Well, it's not individually, sir, so it says a board as an entire whole. So that would be us as well, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't represent an individual board member. The, the board acts as a whole and moves as one voice. So that, to answer your question, it would be us if it's the entire board, not individual.
Yeah, so then this other party, so it seems as though Mr. McCormick would have to find another attorney to represent him.
Right, um, yeah, or, and unless the board moved to, uh, to, to do this as an official action as an entire board, then I would obviously have to recuse myself. But that hasn't been the case. The, the board in its entire capacity hasn't taken action. It's just one individual, uh, commissioner, and it's not even in his official capacity, it's from the title of the, of the docket of the case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, before, before we go into, uh, other business.
I have a question.
Mr. Pat, uh, excuse me, uh, I'll get to you. Uh, before we go into other business, Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Uh, I want to echo what the attorney has said. I want to welcome you to the, uh, board. Uh, looking forward to working with you. Um, I see where you request a meeting and, uh,
Yes.
we will get together and, uh, I, uh, have asked, uh, Commissioner Fly and myself, the attorney and Ms. Hutton, set up a meeting with you at your convenience so we can bring you up to date on some things, okay?
Yes, sir. Um, and just to add real quick, um, I think the, there, I received an email back as well from that email that I sent out. And I was, I know Commissioner Fly, I received his, uh, welcome and his, um, second to that meeting, that special meeting. Thank you, Mr. Fly. And Mr. Commissioner McCormick also was involved. He was wants to partake with that special meeting as well.
We can only have three commissioners present. Four would represent a forum and we cannot do that.
Yeah.
All right. So I've asked Commissioner Fly, myself, you, the attorney, and Ms. Hutton to meet so we can bring you up to date. All right?
Ms., Co, Commissioner Patrick? Did you, when you, when you asked for the special meeting, was it me and you that originally wrote this, that, request that meeting?
Yes, because I received, um, I sent out an email and you replied to the email and it was, uh, myself and you. Um, and then I think Commissioner Fly, he received, he sent me an email as well saying that he was, um, also. So I'm not sure who takes precedence at that point, but.
Uh, when you ask, when you ask, uh, Commissioner, uh, Patrick for a special meeting, uh, uh, that would be a special board meeting. Right? And so, uh, we're gonna try to bring you up to speed and meet with you, but we will not have a special board meeting.
May I finish my conversation now, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
My, my, uh, question is to the board attorney. Um, the last meeting that we had, I requested for you to give me a copy of, of the, the upcoming court dates for the evictions. Um, what happened to that?
I'm sorry, sir, I must have, I must have forgotten about that. And I apologize. But it's on the, it's on the public docket, by the way.
May, may I ask again, sir, any upcoming, um, Housing Authority, um, evictions? May I, you please email me a couple of those?
Let me, if, if I may, Mr. McCormick, I can, I'm looking at my calendar right now. And the, the next upcoming Housing Authority damages hearing is March twenty-fifth at ten a.m.
Email will be appropriate. I mean, if you can just email it to me, that way I can just put it in my reminder, sir. That will work for me.
I'm making a note of that right now.
Okay, and then the next question is that we, you said you, um, have we had the, um, the, the hearings that, that just went by? Was, how many of those was default judgments?
You mean whether or not it was contested?
Yes, well, how many people that, you know, default means they didn't show up, so.
Well, not, not, not always, but sure, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, only, only Um, only, only two individuals showed up. So a lot of the evictions, they were not contested.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other business to come before this board?
Yes. Mr. Ricardo, um, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, pursuant to, pursuant to our bylaws, Section 7 vacancies, at this point in time, this is our next meeting, we need to, we need to replace our vice chair. And with that being said, I, I look, I, I think, I, I appreciate Mr. Patrick for coming on. He's doing homework, he's doing the research. And with that being said, um, I, I move to, to nominate Mr. Patrick as the vice chair.
Uh, Mr. McCormick, that will come up at our next meeting, not this.
No, it has to be done now, sir. Mr. Ricardo, attorney, um, our Section 7 of our bylaws is clear. It states, at the, at the next regular meeting, following the, the, the departure. So this is the meeting, we have a form, we have to have a vote.
That, that is what the bylaw says. I mean, with, with the unexpected passing of Mr. Norvell, you know, I, I, there is some extenuating circumstances there, Mr. McCormick, respectfully. Um, it is, i- if, if you're going by the letter of the bylaws, then yes, that is absolutely true. But because of the unexpectedness of the vacancy, it's not as if someone just resigned. Um, I would recommend that in order to give individuals, you know, not the surprise motion, to give them an opportunity to think about this and, and table it. That would, that would be my recommendations. If you're looking at the exact bylaws, then yes, Mr. McCormick is right, that's what it says.
It's time for us to follow the rules and regulations, as you all, you guys always point out to me. We have more than enough qualified commissioners. We have an executive director who is well paid. We should be able to move forward with this. This is not unexpected. It shows vacancy. When you are, when it's, so if there is a vacancy, we need to follow the bylaws. I'm pretty sure some of us don't like it. But again, I have a motion on the table, and I nominate, miss, uh, I nominate, um, Nathan Patrick for the vice chair.
That is true, Mr. Malone, there is a motion.
All right, I don't, I, is there a second?
Can I second the motion?
Who's that?
Kenny Clark.
You second that, Mr. Fly?
Yeah, I'm gonna give him the table, gotta give him the floor.
All right. Uh, Madam, uh, Chair, would you call the roll, please?
Melz Malone?
No.
Paula Ma?
No.
Dorita Sanders Malone?
No.
Willie Lee? Kenneth Fly?
Aye.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
Nathan Patrick?
Aye.
Motion dies.
There has to be an appointment. I think you're wrong on this one, Mr. Ricardo. Uh, can we please have some legal advice on this one? I believe wholeheartedly that it says that it must be filled.
But, well, Mr. McCormick, you made a motion and it, it didn't pass. We are missing another commissioner as well. That's another, uh, extenuating circumstance here, so I, the board can act as, specifically as the bylaws indicate, but if it can't pass a motion, then I don't, then I would consider you tabling it, so you have all seven commissioners to pass, uh, a deadlock vote.
I would not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna table it, so I guess it failed, and then we have another vote later on.
All right.
Um.
Is there any other business, is there any other business to come before this board?
Yes. I would like to be put on the, uh, next monthly agenda to ask for a, for attorney fees. To ask for my own personal attorney to represent me because of conflict of interest between me and, um, Freeman and Associates. I'd like to be heard on that at that time. So I'd like to be placed on the agenda for the next upcoming, next month meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, public comment?
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioner. Uh, I have a public comment. That floor?
Yes.
All right. Uh, first off, I just want to, uh, on behalf of myself and the East Chicago Housing Authority, we'd just like to send condolences to the board, to the Michigan City Housing Authority on the pass of, uh, Commissioner Norvell. Uh, had a chance to work with him over the past year and a half. I enjoyed it. Uh, I actually just wanna send our condolences for myself, and on behalf of the East Chicago Housing Authority. Also, I want to welcome, uh, Commissioner Nathan Patrick. Uh, once again, like I said, my name is Christopher Vincent, currently Deputy Director, East Chicago Housing Authority. Uh, been in the housing authority now 13 years, uh, certain various capacities. Right now, like I said, for the last year and a half, I've been working, uh, financial TA for the Michigan City Housing Authority. Uh, just a, I guess, a small, uh, bit of advice. I know one email you said you wanted to know the viability of the housing authority at this current time.
Yes.
Um, I would say, uh, number one, uh, get ahold of the audits. I know you had a question about the audits, what the audits were looking like. Uh, the audits for the last few years, just kinda see the viability of also financial statements, uh, how up to date they are and looking at the financials, uh, seeing what everything is looking like. Also, uh, policy, in the policy and procedures of the housing authority, uh, in particular procurement policy, um, seeing that what that is like, so that kinda give you kind of a gauge, so when you do get a chance to look at contracts, just to see what those contracts were looking like, if they were procured correctly and things of that nature. So just kinda like suggest a small, uh, uh, bit of advice when it comes to that. Um, and like I said, as far as the BS that went out the other day, uh, for the vacancy reduction, uh, we'll get that cost analysis over to the boards with no, the dollar amount we're looking at. Um, so we come back, uh, when the BS do come in. Once again, there's a public bid open that will happen on March tonight. There's a public bid opening, so anyone who wants to come in, um, can witness, uh, the public bid opening, uh, for those units. Uh, and that's all my time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Uh, again, Mr. Patrick, please get with, uh, the ED and, uh, let us know when we can sit down and have that, uh, meeting with you, okay?
No, I'll see you.
So we can, uh, so we can, uh, you know, bring you up to speed, okay? All right, did you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, I see we have with, uh, Mr. Michael Mack. All right, you, Mr. Mack?
Very good, sir, very good. Uh, don't have any comments, looking forward to, uh, you know, our, our growth and our, our path forward. Welcome, Mr. Patrick.
Okay. We certainly, uh, welcome Mr. Patrick, uh, and, uh, hopefully he's gonna be an asset, uh, to our board. Uh, I think I saw, uh, Mayor Perry. You have any comments you wanna share with us?
Well, Mr. President, thank you for acknowledging me. I'm excited about the new additions to the board that have been made, uh, within the last year. Uh, Mr. Fly, Mr. McCormick, and Mr. Patrick. Uh, I believe that it's, uh, gonna be a very vibrant, uh, active board, and I'm looking forward to, uh, uh, to some good things. Uh, thank you for, uh, asking me a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments, public comments?
Mr. Malone, I, I did, I, I forgot to mention one thing during my attorney report. And I think it's really important for everyone to hear, and whoever's watching as part of the public. Uh, it, it kind of might have been lost, you know, throughout the meeting, but it's, I think it's crucial. Uh, Ms., Ms. Hutton indicated that HUD has awarded us additional funds in order to, to work on some of these units. That's huge. Okay, you know, that means that we're headed in the right direction, right? You know, HUD would not entrust us with these, uh, large amounts of money if we weren't moving in the right direction. And I, I think everyone needs to understand that, you know. The, the turnaround that, that this board has made from being a troubled agency to getting out of that and being trusted by HUD with additional funding is very important, and that cannot be lost. Okay, there's a lot of information thrown out there, a lot of, um, uh, misconceptions. And I just wanted to point out that if HUD doesn't believe in, in what this board is doing and the fact that they're getting out of trouble, they would have never awarded those funds. So I just wanted to mention that, I wanted to make it very clear. And, um, I just, I, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that, that you all have done, and Ms. Hutton especially. Um, so it, it just goes to show that, you know, we're headed in the right direction, so, thank you.
Um.
Chair, man.
I'm glad that, uh,
two minutes, can I get two minutes, man, about, might be 30 seconds?
Okay, go ahead, and, uh, go ahead, Mr. Fly.
Yeah, I appreciate it, uh, Chairman Malone, you know, no hard feelings, no mishaps or nothing like that. You know, I'm pretty much a realist, man, and, uh, it's obvious the future of this board is not gonna hold the same board members. And, um, that it might take a direction of a turny of the way it's going now. I'm not saying it's going bad or it's going extremely good. So with that being said, um, I think Nathan, um, obviously, he does a little research and he's very tenuous about what he's doing. And me, myself, I'm a realist, I'm gonna be in the streets all the time, so, um, I'm gonna know what's going on at a ground level, for sure. But, uh, at this time, just for the next nomination or any time we nominate, I, I think I wanna make it clear on TV and, uh, everybody that's watching, I don't wanna be nominated for vice president, okay? Um, I have enough on my plate. I deal with Fly High Youth Services, I have Social Status Light VP, I'm on the Richmond Court Board. So I just wanted to make it knowns for anyone that do, might wanna nominate me. Um, and I'm just putting it out there, uh, it would be a failed cause. And I didn't want just one individual thinking about it, or even another individual. It would not happen, so, uh, we can just let that be known for the record. Um, with the housing authority in general, $460,700 to help fix all these buildings and apartments that we have, that these tenants are having extreme problems with, I think that's a hell of a fire, good thing. I don't think we should turn that into a bad thing. Think the money should hurry up and start playing effect to the people that it needs to get to. And, um, whatever it needs to be to get it quickly started, quickly, in the places it need to be, let's get it done as quickly as possible. And anything going with that, it would be a yay for me. God bless.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments, and, uh, I'll close with my comments, uh.
I got my hand.
I am excited.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Malone, uh, Mr. President, uh, uh, there, there was a hand that was raised.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this is.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Uh, I, I'll yield to Mr. McCormick, he had his hand up, but it, I, if I, if I may, I, I would like to add one last, uh, uh, comment, very short. Uh, Rodney, you wanna go ahead?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Perry, go ahead.
Uh, I, I joined the meeting late and, and I apologize for that, I didn't have another commitment, but there was something, a, a comment that was made, uh, by the, the leadership that slipped my mind until Mr. Ricardo's recent comment about the additional funds that have been awarded to Michigan City's, uh, HUD facility. Uh, the comment was made that Michigan City's facility is no longer, uh, a troubled facility. Going back in history, when it was first declared to be a troubled facility, it was, it was declared by the Regional Office of HUD in Indianapolis to be troubled. Uh, had, the statement that it is no longer a troubled facility, is that coming from a current statement from the Regional Office in Indianapolis that the facility is no longer troubled? Or is that a statement made by the local facility leadership?
No, I'm sorry, Mayor, did, is it something that, that I said?
It was you or, or President Malone?
No, no, we're, we're still a troubled agent.
We are a troubled.
It has not changed.
Okay, okay.
My, my comments.
For, for my own, uh, information.
Right, no, no.
You are still, despite the additional funds, you are still classified.
Correct.
By HUD. Okay, thank you.
I was just, I was commenting, uh, Mr. Mayor, that we're moving in the right direction, given the fact that they've, you know, allocated more funding to the housing authority.
Okay, great, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Uh, if I might, Mayor, uh, Perry, no, we are still troubled. We are still operating on a zero threshold, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Right. All right, any other comments before I close?
Yes, Commissioner McCormick.
Go ahead.
I just have to get this off my chest. Um, it's obvious that you personally have a problem with me and some other commissioners that's on here. Um, but when I ask or re- request information, and I'm doing it the right way, that information needs to be turned over. It should not be, um, it shouldn't be who has the majority vote. Cause if one more table, if one more person, if we replace one more person, then the table, then the shoe's gonna be on the other foot. No matter what, and who you are. If the rules are written the way they are, we need to abide by them. Just like our hearing that me and Mr. Patrick requested. You purposely don't wanna meet with me. And you have a mass series of a conflict, along with our, our counsel attorney. You guys should really sit back and, and think about what you're doing. And, and at this point, honestly, you, you, you should remove yourself from the housing authority itself. If it's that, if you feel that you got that much hatred for one individual or any individual who requests rule, requests information, or wants to have the same respect that he gives. And with that being said, everybody, have a blessed night, blessed day. Life is too short for this nonsense that's going on. We need to move forward, and I'm for the people, and I definitely have a problem with everybody from East Chicago getting paid over in East Chicago and getting paid here in Michigan City. And that's our executive director, Mr. Vincent, if he's receiving money from Michigan City, I, I just, I, I have a problem with that. It's nothing personal. It's just that I don't think, I don't believe in double dipping. Thank you.
For the record, no one is double dipping.
Just.
Uh, let me, uh, let me, uh, let me close by saying this. Number one, uh, I am a Christian. And in my opinion, hatred is a byproduct of fear. And I don't fear anyone. I don't even fear my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I'm not given to fear. Therefore, I don't hate anyone. If you have a problem and you are civil, you can sit and talk with me. If you are not civil, and in my strong opinion that there's something wrong with you, then that's another matter. But I do not hate anyone. We might have a difference of opinion, but again, I will repeat, hatred is a byproduct of fear, and I do not fear anyone. Now, in my closing remarks, before I ask for adjournment, again, Mr. Patrick, welcome aboard. Again, get with Ms. Hutton, let's set up a time where we can sit down and meet with you. I asked Mr. Fly to sit in on that meeting. Uh, and, uh, we'll meet with you, the executive director, Mr. Fly, myself, and the attorney. And we'll bring, we'll do our best to bring you up to speed, so you can make some good sound decisions, uh, in our business, okay? Uh, in closing, again, uh, I would like to thank Ms. Hutton. I would like to thank Mr. Vincent. And I would like to thank this team. Uh, we went from a 42 in our REACT inspection to a 61. That's good. I know we're headed in the right direction. And I'm well aware that this board might change at some point. And I don't have a problem with that, because that's beyond my control. But I will say, as long as we're here, we'll do our level best to make sure we serve the residents of the Michigan City Housing Authority. We're not here for any games. We're not here to play politics. We're not politicians. As a matter of fact, uh, I'm apolitical at this point, as a commissioner. But I also can say to you, Mayor, that I think you were councilman in the 5th District, right?
Yes, sir.
And I voted for you. So, again, we are here to do the very best that we can do for this agency, to bring it out of trouble. To do what we have to do. And I think you were of a different persuasion at that time, Mr. Mayor, but nevertheless, nevertheless, we're here to do the best we can for this housing authority. And with that, this chair will now seek a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Ms. Ma.
Moved by Mrs. Ma to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by, I didn't get who seconded.
Mr. McCormick.
It was seconded by Mrs. McCormick. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
You don't have to, sir.
Milton Malone?
Yes.
Carla Ma?
Yes.
Dorita Sanders Malone?
Yes.
Willie Lee? Kenneth Fly?
Yes.
Rodney McCormick?
Aye.
And Nathan Patrick?
Aye.
With six eyes, zero nose, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Everyone stay safe and have a good evening.